The May 6th, 2019 Inkster City Council Meeting is called to order. Everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would everyone please remain standing? We'd like to ask Pastor Baltimore, please come give us a prayer.
First of all, good afternoon. Father, we thank you once again for being before your people of this great city. We ask in your name, God, that you move by your Spirit in this city. We ask, God, that everything that's ruined, that it would rise to the occasion, that it will be blessed and prosperous, in the name of Jesus Christ. We ask, God, that you bless even the mayor, the pro tem, and its great council of people, that they will walk in your will, God, and do the administration that you have called them to be in. Father, that it is not no big I and no little you, but we come together in love and unity, that this city would be brought to a place that you have called it to. And I thank you for your word, God, that we're blessed in the city and in the field. I ask, God, that each administrator here be touched by your anointing, by your Spirit, that they will walk in integrity, Father God, that you will get the glory in this place. Somebody here today, God, need to speak a word about something that's happening in their house, in their city around there. But, God, I know you're able to do exceedingly abundantly. Above all, we can ask to think. Now, God, we're going to thank you, because we know in Isaiah 54 and 17, you said, "No weapon formed against this city shall prosper." This is a great city and a great people. Now use them for your glory. Knit them together in unity and in love. Most of all, in the word of God, you say, "The greatest gift is charity." Let us have charity for one another. Let us love one another as you have loved us. And this we ask in your name, as we administrate our gifts back to this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolley.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a form.
Everybody a chance to look at the agenda? Need to add or take off anything? Red Cross presentation under presentation. Anything else we need to add or take off? Closed session item, we need to add that to make that item E. Anything else we need to add, change? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Have motion to approve the agenda with the add-ons?
Report. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Presentation, Red Cross presentation. Come on up.
Hello, everybody.
Right there to the mic.
I was gonna ask, I wasn't sure where you needed me.
Right there.
Forgive me, I don't know proper protocol.
You can bend that down.
Okay.
No, 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 talk to the mic.
Talking to the mic. All right, do you prefer me this way?
That's fine.
Okay. First of all, we just wanted to say thank you for inviting us here tonight. My name is Sarah Hemminger, and I am a representative of the Red Cross. I'm actually from the Upper Peninsula, here to help with the flooding operation. It is a privilege to be here and see green and flowers. I still have five inches of snow, so I really love this. So, thank you for inviting us. This is Jessica Warfield, and she is your local disaster program manager. So, she's here tonight to help. We just wanted to share with you what we're doing in the community related to the flood, what services we have going on, where the community can get help in terms of recovery, moving forward through this process. So, that's why we're here. We have started the operation Wednesday, Wednesday night, getting calls for requests for help for flooding in basements and houses and homes and people losing things. So, immediately, we go into action. Our job is to provide immediate needs assistance, focused on making sure people have a safe place to go, making sure they have access to food, clothing, health, mental health, spiritual care, all those kinds of things. So, we immediately go into action. We've been working through the community, providing what we call distribution of emergency supplies. So, the biggest needs we're seeing are, people need help cleaning up. They need help knowing where to go to get resources and connecting, which is why I'm here. My job is external relations. It's bringing community together, bringing partners together to have conversation about how can you guys work together with the Red Cross to help your people move forward and recover from this disaster. So, that's what we're doing. Jessica, help me, we have been doing, like I said, mobile distribution of these emergency supplies and making referrals. Lately, we've been...
So, we came over to your facility just the other day, and we provided intakes for clients to be able to start assistance. We did receive 77 intake sheets at that day. We're using that information to be able to formulate damage assessment teams, to be able to actually go to homes and knock on doors to be able to see. Because with floods, oh, thank you. So, with floods, as you know, we can't see it. It's in the basements, it's in the gutter. So, we are calling clients, knocking on doors, and actually going to their homes to be able to see the damage. We're doing all this so we can be able to formulate a plan to be able to see how can we help best. So, the distribution of emergency supplies, that's bleach gloves with some, it's some more, some shovels, garbage bags, hand sanitizer. We've been providing all those things throughout the community, and we did have them on site. And anybody who was not on site, we do have mobile routes planned tomorrow. We will be in the community with them on our trucks, actually offering them to anybody that we see on the street. So, people can be able to come and say, "My neighbor's down the streets, he'll need them." We are planning our routes based on where we started yesterday.
Great.
Yeah. Oh, and we do, I said, the spiritual care, the mental health. This is a trying time for everybody, so we want to make sure that anybody who's in need of that support, they don't have to wait till casework starts. This is, we don't want people to have to wait, because we can't formulate our recovery until we process what's going on now. So, those are services that we have available. We did have a client who had some extreme health conditions, and we were able to provide some assistance to her just recently. So, we want you to know that we are here to be able to offer that to you immediately, as much as we can right now. We have scaled up our operation. That's the thing we want to tell you. So, this is coming in, so Sarah came in first from the UP, and actually, we have more people coming in from around the region, starting tomorrow morning, to actually come to be able to support Wayne County. So, we are definitely here to make sure we're moving for you. Want to open it up for any questions, or did you all have any questions?
Do you have a number where you can be reached?
Yes. So, always, no matter what, call 1-800-RED-CROSS. You will be able to reach us. And I will give you the direct number to our office. That is 313-833-8816. We are bringing in extra volunteers to help staff the phones, to be able to take intake information from anybody who did not make it to that site. We are giving that to our team to actually use that to go knock on doors. So, anybody who didn't make it in, they could call, get their name, leave their name and number, and we are scheduled to come out. Okay, 313-833-8816. And if anybody gets frustrated, 1-800-RED-CROSS. Simple, put your zip code in, and you will get to our office.
We definitely appreciate your assistance on behalf of everybody in the community, and we look forward to doing what we can to help you in the next couple of days also.
Absolutely. I think Mr. Bibbs had a question, too.
Yes, just to piggyback on the Red Cross. Everybody that made it out to my office Saturday, Sunday, and this morning, we put a database together, we forwarded it to the Red Cross, so they have all your addresses, so they will be getting in contact with you.
You only have the mobile? You don't have a stationary location, or are you using DPW as your stationary point?
We did this weekend use it as a stationary point. At this time, that site was shut down on Sunday, I believe. Okay, but we do have mobile plans right now.
Okay, because we sent out an email to all the residents that are on our email list about the 10th. The thing moved from the 7th to the 10th? That's the paperwork period, okay.
So, I'm gonna actually turn it back to Sarah to actually explain a couple of other things that's happening in the community related to what you're speaking about.
So, there's also, on Wednesday, this Wednesday, there are two things opening up. They're called Mark's Multi-Agency Resource Centers. And those are a number of agencies coming together, partners throughout Wayne County coming together at those locations to provide a number of services. Everything from vouchers for various places to get further resources, referrals, onsite assistance, you know, nurses and things like that that'll be there to do assessments. We will be there giving out supplies and referrals and making connections and advocating for people. So, those locations are very in heights. Do you have the...
I do not, I'm sorry.
There's a press release coming out tonight that'll have the location.
It will be one in Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights.
And Lincoln Park.
Yes. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring the address and the times, but they'll be open Wednesday and Thursday. Great, thank you.
Can you give us the name of that multi-agency again?
Multi-Agency Resource Center.
As she stated, there will be a press release coming out. I just wanted to make something out tonight.
Yeah.
Me or the fire chief, and we will get that out to you. The minute we get the press release to let you know. But they was waiting to talk to, Cady was waiting to talk to the state to make sure it was a go for wins, that they won't act, because they're gonna use their courthouse. So, they just had to make sure it's a go. Once we get that press release, so those, until we get that press release and I forward that information to you, you'll know it's official.
And we are working with all the cities in Wayne County. So, as you asked about the fixed site, tomorrow, we will actually be fixed in Ink... E-course. E-course tomorrow from 10 to 6. Again, all of these sites that are being asked are open to anyone in the community. From 10 to 6, we will have additional supplies onsite. So, even if somebody already picked up some supplies and need some additional trash bags, they can be able to come and pick it up. So, that's gonna be at the E-course Fire Department tomorrow from 10 to 6.
And I do have an address for the Dearborn Heights location in the time. It's 25687 Michigan Avenue in Dearborn Heights, and that's Wednesday from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 25687 Michigan Avenue, Dearborn Heights, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m.
That's Beach Daily and Michigan Avenue, between Beach Daily and Out of Drive. I'm sorry, not Out of Drive. Yeah, that is Out of Drive.
Thank you.
It's the courthouse, Dearborn Heights courthouse. Beach Daily, go, yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate your time.
It's the guy in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Volunteers, for sure. We need time, we need your time. Absolutely, time, money, of course, always.
Yeah, as Sarah is stating, right now, anybody can be trained on the site if they want to come to be able to help complete the damage assessment, because it has to be done in the Red Cross way, so we can see who qualifies for financial support. So, we're trying to develop a plan, and we need people, bodies, because we are only working with a small workforce that put on your boots, can you go, can you work a smartphone, and when you're gonna go to a house, we're gonna give you addresses and be able to do damage assessment.
Is FEMA going to be coming in eventually?
We don't know yet. We've not heard anything yet from FEMA. And again, I think a lot of that comes from the damage assessment that's being collected from all your municipalities. Once that's established, then they'll have a better idea of what they're able to do. Yes, they're trying to go for a declaration to get some additional resources, yep. We're trying to support that as much as we can.
At these locations, you doing training, or are you just for assistance?
For assistance. For training, you come to the chapter office.
So, if you're interested in, we just moved our chapter office. So, if you're interested in volunteering, again, call that phone number that we told you about. But our chapter office is located on Out of Drive and Southfield Freeway, right there by WC3 campus. We actually just moved over there in October. 7-800, 7-800 West Out of Drive. Yes. And they can get you signed up if you are interested any days. If you got a five-hour block, just give us the time, bring your boots. We will train you on the scene, and we will send you out.
Is that in Detroit?
Detroit.
Okay, because there's two hour drives to south.
West, yeah. We are, we're at 7-800 West Out of Drive, right there, Out of Drive and Southfield Freeway, right across from WC3 campus.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, we have a public hearing tonight? We have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Report. Okay, been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, public hearing is now open. This is a public hearing on the FY 2019, 2020 Inkster City Budget. So, anyone who wants to speak on the budget, it's posted on the website. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at it. You're welcome to come up to the podium, state your name, address, and then give us your comment.
Aaron Sixt's name, do you have some sort of synopsis or something to show that what the budget is?
Everything's been posted on the website, all the materials we've had in our study session.
We didn't, we didn't have nothing to pass out, so we can see what's, what the budget's all about?
As the mayor stated, we always provide a hard copy.
You did what?
There's a hard copy that's always provided at the clerk's office, and we post the information on the website. But I have summaries that I can, kind of a budget summary of the general fund and all the funds, and I can provide a copy for you.
Okay, but I thought maybe, since we're having the hearing here, we'd have some pass out, handouts.
When we post a notice of the hearing, we're required to have a hearing every year, and we always provide the materials. Along with, we've been, we've had one study session with council. That's a public meeting. We have another one this Wednesday. So, we try and give the public multiple opportunities to weigh in as we go through the budget deliberation. So, we're still in the deliberation process.
I understand that, I understand what you're doing, but I thought since you're having, we at the meeting, that there'll be something, you know. But you don't have anything to give me to...
Nope.
I may have questions on it, but...
Yeah, and that's, that's why we, prior to, one week ahead of time, we, you know...
I understand, I understand.
In order to avoid trying to circulate copies, we publish that information and have it available at City Hall for everyone.
Yeah, okay. I just thought in the past, we've always had some handouts here at the council meeting when the budget was discussed. You know, I guess that rule has been changed, yeah. Okay. I guess it's been changed, okay. I understand.
Anybody else? Any other comments?
What do you mean, no question? We don't have a copy?
Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
If you got questions, are you done?
If everyone is done, motion to close the public hearing.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda?
Report. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Boards and commissions. I'd like to appoint Father Ellis Clifton back to the Inkster Housing Board, Housing Commission, I'm sorry. Can somebody make a motion?
So moved.
Report. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Any other nominations for appointments? Okay. And we talked about earlier to do some research with respect to the TIFA, DDA, and Economic Development Corporation. Who's gonna do that? Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay. Going down to new business.
Consideration and approval of a request for the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed on behalf of the City of Inkster Economic Development Corporation regarding 28440 Reynolds Street, Inkster, Michigan 48141.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval to extend a contract with Midwest Recycling for a recycling program at no cost to the city. The contract will be from July 2nd, 2019, until July 2nd, 2024.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval of correcting a clerical error performed by the Michigan landbait and deed in 29230 Carlton, as duly noted to James Bush.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Report. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? It passes.
Item D is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase one residential house, which is located on the north side of Rosewood Street, between Harrison Street and Center Drive, as duly noted, in the amount of, I'm sorry, 2,000 to M313 Properties and Investment.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those, I'm sorry. Oh, nothing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
And item E is a motion to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Garth.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Passes. Hey, we're, public participation? Please limit your remarks to three minutes. The clerk will be jumping up and down, waving, screaming, once you hit the three-minute mark. Tony Bailey.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
City clerk, treasurer, city attorney, department heads, those who viewing and those in the audience. I'm here on behalf of beautification. I'd like to thank everyone who came out to the cleanup kickoff on the 27th of April. Those who came out, and there were a lot of different ones who was out in the neighborhood cleaning up their block as well. The cleanup for this month will be May 18th. We wanna look at cleaning up Michigan Avenue, the parade route. So, we want different ones to come out and help clean up the different litter that's along the route. I also like to thank the Mr. Jones for sponsoring. I can always depend on him, and also Councilman Chisholm. Any questions? I'd like to say the dumpsters were used. You know, people was out cleaning, and that's a good thing. So, the dumpsters will be out again, and the locations, for those who don't know, will be at Wheatley Park, Lamone Park, Westwood Park, and at the rec center. We'll meet up at the rec at 9:00 a.m., so if you need trash bags and gloves, please come out. Thank you.
I have a question, again, for your consideration. Could you move the dumpsters around?
Where would we move into?
In other sections of the city, because it's always in those same four areas?
Well, the reason why I have it in the areas, the parks, instead of on somebody's street, because some people, instead of putting it in the dumpster, they have it all out on the street. And we don't want different ones complaining, saying stuff is dumped all on our street.
Well, there's Manor Park in my district that could be used. Sound hell of it.
Yeah, it's a big lot, because the parks that I name is the major parks that people know.
It's big enough for you to put a dumpster on and not be in the way of...
Well, we can look at that, because we used to have Kennedy Park, but then people was illegally dumping, so we had to close that off and move it to the rec center.
Well, just, I'm just asking you to consider.
Okay, we can look into that.
I have something. Can you let them know that they can pick up the bags at the police department ordinance, too? Because they can pick up bags there.
Okay, our city liaison, our city council liaison, you can let the people know. I was gonna say if you...
Okay, well, you can also pick up trash bags. If you're cleaning your neighborhood individually, you know, getting your group together, you can pick up the trash bags and gloves at the police department on Saturday, too. And, oh, shoot, please don't do this to be in public. Yeah, you can pick them up there. And we did have people participating, because I got calls. They, well, my district, but I got calls, so we did have people participating, okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yvette Brock?
Good evening, council mayor.
Good evening.
Department heads. Mr. Jones. I have two announcements. One, first, I just want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you again. Starting with the mayor, I'm gonna call out Councilman Chisholm and Councilman Howard for your great work of getting the word out about the flood. I got up to announce it in church, and my, some of my parishioners mentioned you guys directly. I know you put it out on Facebook. And let me say this, this mayor and council has been more touchable than anyone in Inkster that I have ever seen. We can actually touch them, ask them questions, and they respond to it. You can have lunch with your mayor every month, if you so choose to. And so, as we hit election time, we need to kind of remember that. These people are touchable. We can call them on the phone, they will stop and answer our questions. So, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you guys for being there. Voice is putting on its first Meet the Candidates. We're gonna start with districts 1, 3, and 5. It will be Monday, May 13th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Burger, Baylor, Woodson Community Center on, I'm sorry, on Carlisle in Inkster, Michigan. This is not gonna be a debate. It was Meet the Candidates. The candidates that are running for those districts, you are gonna be able to come out, and they're gonna tell you some things as to why they're running, introduce themselves, so you can get familiar. There's a lot of candidates out there this year, so that we are presenting this. This is not us endorsing any candidates. The Voice Committee is presenting this to the city of Inkster so that you can make the best decision you can with the most information that you could have. So, we hope by inviting everybody out in the city that you will come out and see what the candidates have to say. We will have further Meet the Candidates for districts 2, 4, and 6 on Thursday, May the 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. at the American International Academy at 2710 Avondale. And then, we will have Meet the Mayoral Candidates on Thursday, May 30th, at 6:00 p.m. at Booker Dozier. And I get, you guys have the address to that one. Then, we'll start a round of Q &amp; As where the audience can participate. So, we will come back around where we'll have other forums. And again, this is a great opportunity that you can see who's running, see what's they, what they're talking about, and make the best informed decision possible with the one vote that you have that does count. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Parham-Jones.
Good evening, mayor and support staff and citizens of Inkster. I want to share some exciting news with you. This is the second time that we are presenting the Y... Uh, this is the second time that we are presenting the Y Toto Children's Choir at Middlebelt Baptist Church. It is, um, May the twenty-second at six thirty PM. Free admission, a love offering will be collected for the orphanage. And, um, I suggest that you try to get there early. Also, Equip, uh, class of two thousand and nineteen are invited to our community-wide baccalaureate service, a ceremony. And that's anybody that's in the twelfth grade that will be graduating, they can participate in the baccalaureate service. Uh, this will be June the second at four PM. I have handed out some flyers, and if you want some additional information, you should see Dr. Fleming's, or go on our website, www.equipforsuccess.org. And I do have flyers for those of you that did not get one, and I thank you so very much for allowing me to speak.
Where is the graduation service gonna be at?
At Middlebelt Baptist Church.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Everybody know where Middlebelt Baptist Church is, okay?
Jihad Abdullah.
Hello, how y'all doing?
Good.
Um, we got a big Juneteenth celebration this year, and, uh, we kinda long for it, so, um, it's a big field right there on Harrison and Harriet, next to the Harrison store. And I was, it's an old guy that cuts the field all the time right there. I knocked on his door, asked him can I use the field to cook some dinners to raise some money for, um, the Juneteenth celebration. He informed me that that field is owned by the city. So, I called to see if I, where I came to the city hall meeting to address y'all, to see if I can use that field to cook some dinners to raise, well, this Friday on the tenth, so I can raise some money for the Juneteenth celebration.
That's the field behind the, behind the Harrison store?
Oh, I know where it is.
Yeah.
See, till we should've added to the agenda if we wanna take action on it.
Where is it located?
But, right next, you know the party store is on the corner of Harrison and Carlisle?
Yeah.
Right, right behind it, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, no one's gonna stop you, I don't think, anybody have any objection? We can't really vote on it, but I don't think it'll be a problem.
Think it's gonna happen?
Thorzic, don't be putting them in jail. Let them sell the dinners. It should be good.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Cooper?
Is that date on Juneteenth?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Everybody around here. And everybody in the building and those that are watching on TV. The Inkster Goodfellows, we're back. May seventeenth will be our spaghetti and fish dinner. The dinners are ten dollars. We're doing perch and catfish. Our spaghetti is beef or turkey. And if anybody needs a ticket, or if you want the flyer and mark your food down that you want, I have both. And we need you all, so we can have no child without a Christmas in the city of Inkster. We are really trying to make sure, uh, that that happens, and we need your support.
What time is that at?
It is at, that's May seventeenth, eleven AM to four thirty. Gotcha, Mayor? Anybody else? No, I didn't, I said four thirty.
Can't believe a word she says.
You really can't. Don't be trying to get me embarrassed. You know what? You sell yours, I sell mine, 'cause you gonna get us in trouble. But anybody else that wants tickets? And I am soliciting prayer for my husband. On Wednesday, he goes for a procedure on his heart, and we are praying that he does not need the total procedure.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Officer Lebo.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Alright, just got a few announcements, just wanted to let you know that our next bake sale is going to be, uh, Wednesday, May twenty-second, ten AM, in the police department lobby. We will be taking special orders. If you would like to place the order, you can contact myself or Denise Champagne. So you can place in advance to make sure you get like your shortbread, or your cookies, or oatmeal cookies, whatever the case may be. Movie nights are starting back up in June, so I need funding, gotta pay for them. So, I hope you guys will come, get some goodies, they're always delicious, they're always usually homemade by the Inkster Commission on Aging. So please come and support us, you know, it does a really, really great things in the community. And I appreciate the Inkster Commission on Aging and the citizens for coming out to, uh, support us. So ten AM, May twenty-second, police department lobby, next bake sale. We are still accepting applications for the, um, Michigan Youth Leadership Academy that we're doing in partnership with Michigan State Police. We're looking for youth boys ages fourteen to fifteen years old that are Inkster residents, so they can go up to Lansing at a five-day stayaway camp, um, learn leadership skills along with team-building activities, resume building, they go home with a full, um, interview outfit. So it's a really, really great program, and we unfortunately are not getting a lot of applications. So I don't want them to scrap it, so please, spread the word. I mean, this is awesome for our young men, so I hope that you will, uh, help us get some kids involved in this. Um, other than that, we will see you next, oh, wait, I'm sorry, June sixth. It is very early stages, so I don't have the flyer yet, we're waiting on the approval. But June sixth at the rec center, we're going to be having a mental health summit at six PM. It's going to be in sponsorship with the, um, Inkster Police Department and Detroit Mental Wayne Health Authority. It's gonna be a discussions type of panel, we'll have four or five panelists. The, um, audience can ask questions about mental health, substance abuse, and use in the city, so, I'll have flyers for you next time.
I just have a question. Didn't you send me that, put out?
Yeah.
The mental health thing already, so you already have flyers?
Well, I created the flyer, but I, I wasn't told it's good to disseminate.
Oh, it's good.
Oh, okay. I'll have it on social media in about five minutes.
Excuse me, I have a question. For your bake sale, can, can we donate like cupcakes and stuff from different areas or?
Absolutely, yes, we do accept donations of baked goods to sell.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Erin Sims.
Good day, Mayor, Council.
Good day.
And everybody. Um, I'm just here to, uh, make an announcement for, uh, May eighteenth. Um, we know May eighteenth is the beautification day. Um, so on May eighteenth, over at four three three six Williams Street, uh, we will be doing a beautification, um, over there from Inkster Road back to Williams, um, in celebration of Malcolm X's ninety-fourth birthday, um, over at the house. Uh, so we're planning a barbecue that day. Um, we're also having, um, uh, different teams to come out. So we have, uh, UAW Local nine hundred will be, be there, um, because Malcolm worked at, uh, the Wayne Stampin' Plant and was a member of the UAW, uh, nine hundred. And, uh, the state senator Betty Jean, she's gonna be out, and she's bringing a team with her, uh, to come spend the whole day with us as well. Um, but I have a, a, a question to ask, if possible. So in the backyard of the house, there's like these big old trees, I mean, like, Arla chainsaws, can't do nothing with them. Um, if possible, um, if possible, uh, if the city knows or if the city can help, um, somebody to come over and like remove those, uh, like the big trees out the backyard, um, so we could try to clear that fence line area out?
We usually use a contractor for our trees. Um, we have to contact them, see if they'd be willing to do it for free, you know?
Okay. And if, if they do, we gotta text ID number, uh, we could go text them with them and things of that nature.
The big, what type of trees is it?
Man, it's like the tree in the backyard, like they just fell off, like the whole tree.
It's dead?
Yeah.
Anybody need any wood?
Don't tell my husband, please. You said you had a number? You had a text number or something?
Uh, well, you can call Project, Project, we hope, we believe, phone number is, uh, seven three four two two four eight one two seven. Again, that number is seven three four two two four eight one two seven. Um, we already have people that's, uh, donating hot dogs, hamburger buns. Um, if anybody wanna donate, um, you could just call that number and let us know if you wanna donate like paper plates, uh, or just even stop by that day on, uh, May eighteenth, from nine AM to three PM.
What's the number again, seven three four what?
Two two four eight one two seven.
She's a lot of buzz on social media, so I think it's gonna be a huge turnout, huge, huge, huge.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Pastor Jean Overly.
What is it called?
Well, good evening, everyone, I have a couple of announcements, and Hank, I'm also gonna have something with our young people on Making Your Money Move Youth Workshop, and you can register on Eventbrite. It is also on Saturday, May the eighteenth. It's at Christ Temple, it's from ten until twelve PM. It's a free financial workshop for youth in the fifth through the twelfth grade. So we wanna make sure our young people start learning about budgeting and choices, needs versus wants. So Operation Refuge is hosting that for our children, please register on Eventbrite. My second announcement is for Zaman International, and I sent out quite a few, uh, invites. They are actually in Ramadan, as we know that are familiar with the culture. So they will not be eating, but they wanna keep the restaurant, that's almost a restaurant, open during this time. So, we wanna be invited out on Wednesdays between twelve and two. You can place a to-go order, they have the text information, and the suggested donation is eight ninety-five. And the chef is Chef Danielle from Television, so, that's the kinda cool thing, and quite a few of you in council have actually been down and supported, so, I wanna make sure that I support and that I share the information that we support Zaman in this, because they do a lot of work here in Inkster. So, wanted to share that. And I had one more announcement, so Felicia have to find it, so, am I getting close to my three minutes?
What are you talking?
I'm still good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know you were having lunch with your people. Yeah, I've eaten quite a few times here, great work, great work. I have one more announcement, but I don't see it in my phone, so, I'll do Tim's announcement, which is, think Inc., buy here, work here, clean here, enjoy and be safe here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernest Hendricks, did he leave? Oh, okay.
I, um, I wanna make one correction that I heard a few minutes ago, that, um, this council, you know, I appreciate all of you, uh, were the best we ever had, and they reach out and touch. Well, they reached out and touched me for twenty-four years, and you can, my wife can attest to that, you know, taking my telephone calls. But I know it's election year, so we can bypass that. And Jerome contested it also. What I really wanna say is that I, I, I appreciate the young lady that's going to do the cleanup for the city. And she, I, I wanna commend her for doing that and getting involved that way, you know? But we need to do that year-round. You know, I drive through the city quite a bit, and I see trash all over everywhere. Particularly, I'm concerned, well, I'm concerned about the whole thing, but particularly along our, um, main drag, Michigan Avenue in particular. Up there at the bus stop in front of the post office. I mean, the trash bags were laying out there, and the trash was all over the place, you know, for quite a while. Now, I don't know whether it's been cleaned up, or they haven't been right there lately, but it would just look horrible, and that's on our main street. You know what I mean? And I think that Mayor and Council need to travel the city every once in a while, just to take a look and see what's there. There are houses that are dilapidated, need boarding up, there are hazards for people possibly getting into them, and we need to deal with that. You know, and I would think that, you know, this is something that this wonderful council would be interested in doing, and making sure that the appearance of the city, you know, is kept up, you know, you know what I mean? And that's, and that's important to, uh, all the citizens. And it makes a difference when people drive through and/or people want to make investments in the community, you know? They look at the community when they drive through and say, what are we looking at? How well-kept is it? Is people taking care of it? Are they concerned? All of that is part of it, you know? And that's part of what the Mayor and Council, uh, job is, you know, because I and my colleagues in the past, we all did, reached out and touched people, you know, there were none of us that were pretty slack in that particular area, you know? So, I would just simply say that, you know, that's something that I'm very, very concerned with, you know? And if you can do something with that, I would certainly appreciate it. And I'm sure the citizens would appreciate it as well, you know? And particularly, this is election year, so it may, it may look good out there, you know, uh, doing what, what, what needs to be done, okay? And I'd like, where, where did you tell me that I can get a copy of the budget, a physical, physical copy of the budget?
Uh, at the clerk's office.
At the clerk's office?
Yes.
Is there a charge for it?
Um, I'm not sure, uh, there, there's a...
I don't have a lot of money now.
And if you, if you, if you provide, I can email you one this evening if you...
I'd hear you.
If you give me your email address, I can email you a copy this evening.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very, very much, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Lucy Byrd, Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Thank you, Mayor and the Council, Inkster Council. Um, I came to, um, I am, um, the Adventist Community Service Director for the church, uh, the outreach program. And in, um, May twenty-fifth, uh, twenty nineteen, at eleven o'clock AM, we're gonna be honoring, um, Eddie White, who is the CEO of American International Academy. Uh, he came, he came in, uh, twenty thirteen, after the public schools has been closed, and there was only, uh, at AIA, there was only a hundred and twenty students, uh, and they was leasing a building. And currently, he has two, uh, he has two, um, campuses, uh, in Inkster. And that, he has, uh, seven hundred and seventy students, and he is committed to bringing, uh, education back to Inkster in the form of a charter school. Um, I came, uh, to thank the mayor for agreeing to attend, uh, our honor program. And I also brought, uh, invitations, uh, for the entire council. Um, people need to know that these schools are here. Parents should know that they, they have an opportunity to send their kids out or to educate their school in, uh, Inkster. And that's why I'm here, and I need you all to help me to get the word out, because, um, our kids, uh, need to be at home if possible. But if the parents, uh, feel comfortable sending their kids out, they can. But if they feel comfortable allowing their kids to be educated in Inkster, they can. I'm just coming to tell you that the parents have a choice. And I, I came, I have, um, invitation for each council person, and I hope that you will come and, and meet him and have lunch with him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask him something. If you're in contact with other people who are just as interested in our kids, we're looking for people from Inkster to sit and run for these various school boards. Because even, you know, if people don't wanna send, hm, oh, don't wanna send their kids somewhere, we still need representation from Inkster on the Westland School Board. We're looking for people to run for that right now. On the Taylor School Board, there's nobody over there. And the Romulus School Board, and the, um, what's the other one? Westwood. Although, I've, I've had pretty good success with Westwood in talking to them, maybe it's because they're so close. But if you have this group of people, let them know that they're needed too, to, to, to watch over our kids who are still out there. Sure, we can bring them back, but those that are left out there still need representation on those different school boards.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel... Samuel Ward Bay.
Hello, Doran.
Good, how are you?
Hi, everybody, Doran. First, I'm gonna piggyback, piggyback off where Aaron said. I ain't got no chainsaws, but on behalf of our community up, if we just happen to get them chainsaws, we'll do the job for free. So, but I just wanted to introduce to, uh, Inkster and the council. Have y'all ever heard of the Community Benefit Agreement? I think there's a couple floating around up there, like, um, I think that's something we need. I mean, uh, that's just where I'm at with it. I mean, I want to know what y'all think.
There's been some discussion, at least in the community, I mean, on social media, I've seen some stuff about agreements. I was familiar with them, um, my most recent experience is Detroit's Community Benefit Agreement when they were building the stadium. So there's some pros, there's some cons. Um, but we haven't discussed it as a body. I don't think everybody's had a chance to really read through it and research it to, for us to discuss it as a body. But that's something, definitely, there's no reason for it not to be on the table. As a matter of fact, we're supposed to sit down, I think, with people who are interested in this. Maybe we can sit down some folks from the community, a couple of us from council, and we can talk through this and see if this really fits what our community's doing right now. Can it benefit us? Because we're open, you know, as long as it benefits the community.
It most definitely benefited the community. Uh, Community Benefit Agreement is saying that any developer that's coming into our community, um, have to hire our citizens. Any company that's here to stay, businesses that's big, gotta hire our people. If not, we need a ten percent kickback towards educational programs because we don't have a school. Yeah, the charter school is something, but that's not Inkster. So as of right now, we need educational program. All these developers about to come in and make all these millions and take it back and get their fire station together, take it back and get their schools together, and our city get left dry. We already got enough people plucking up that, we have to put that in. That protects our people. That empower our people. Please bring that in. Please look at that serious. That's for our people. Other than that, we lose. Please look into that, y'all.
Okay. Thank you. Will Miller.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Will Miller. I am, um, currently president of National Action Network here in Western Wayne County. We had a, um, a small dinner for our, 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 um, members and friends, uh, just recently up at the rec center. Went over remarkably well. Shocked me. Um, we had about fifty folks come out. Um, our state director, um, Mr. Riddle came out, spoke to us for about fifteen, twenty minutes. We had a good time. Good food. Food was real good. Ate more. I'm hosting, and I didn't get to eat any of the smoked meats that I paid for. But it was really good. Folks really enjoyed it. But, um, if, we're gonna be trying to do that annually though, bringing that back. So, um, we'll be talking more about it here, you know, over time. But for those who came out, thank you so much. Been walking through the neighborhood a lot lately, obviously. Um, it's election season. Um, I was blessed to be one of the folks that's gonna be on the ballot. And while I was knocking on doors, some people said, well, since you gonna be knocking on doors and going downtown, can you ask them to take care of this pothole right here? So I was like, okay. So on my street, uh, about the two six five seventy roughly on, um, Monticello Street, there's a pothole that has grown in size exponentially over the last couple of weeks, um, that they asking that if the director could come out, have somebody come by and take a look at it. Another one is on the first block of Arlington Street, right around, um, two fifty Arlington. There's another one, um, right in the middle of the road that folks pointed at and told me to say something about when I got here. Also, for the clerk, I had a question. While some of us are running, I was wondering if it would, it all be possible for us to get copies of board packets minus the, the, um, the stuff that goes in the closed session while things is going? In case any of us are, are blessed enough to get a seat, we can, because in this city, once, once you get elected, you gotta hit the ground running. There ain't no, you know, time, no buffer. You gotta go. So if there's a, if we do get that, can we get copies of it so we can kind of follow along through the election period?
It's all on the website.
Is it? So at the same time that they get it? Okay, then that's cool. All right. I appreciate it, y'all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What, we, we doing that or are we directing them to the website? Because you can get the whole thing on the website.
Yeah, just so if people didn't know, the agenda and the entire packet is available on the websites for anybody to look at. So you'll know exactly what we have when we're discussing things while we sit up here. All right. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Um, I will have forthcoming announcements. Um, as everyone knows, we do have an August sixth primary election. And, um, from henceforth, um, council meetings, I will be having, um, announcements for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
No comments. Thank you.
Mayor and council communication. Let's see, Councilman Oldham.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I want to make the city and the council aware of the fact that on, um, Street Rosewood, where the, where the school is, there's a school there. I've been getting complaints concerning that location because cars are parking on both sides of the street. People cannot get through. While I was out getting petitions signed, I had a number of, uh, people that I talked to who had a complaint concerning it. All the way from, uh, eastern to the other end of the street. And I went through there, and I couldn't get through there myself. Then along eastern going back toward the rec complex going north, I mean, south, there was, there was cars parked on both sides of that street. I haven't talked to the chief yet, but I wanted to get with him and, and take him through and, 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 and show him the area. But I've been getting complaints about that from, you know, a number of people. And, and I know what they're talking about because I couldn't get through there. I had to turn and go another direction. I think we really need to, to deal with, uh, that issue. And the fact that the school has, um, a lot of vacant land in back of it. It seems to me that, you know, if they need parking, you know, that land is available, because it's all a part of the school. That land is available for them to put parking back there. I just want to mention that because it was mentioned to me, uh, by the various people that I was out, you know, talking with concerning, um, petitions. Also, um, I had a question concerning, um, an issue that was brought up a while back by, uh, Ms. Owens, Deborah Owens, where she talked to the council concerning the possibility of a person being made available by the, by the University of Michigan at no cost to the city as it relate to, uh...
It was PR.
Uh, yeah, PR. And I was wondering, did, did, did we, did we ever look into finding that individual? Because if I understood her right, the University of Michigan will make a person available at no cost to the city.
Yeah, we did look into that, um, extensively. And, yeah, we could get a student to come intern here. But the, the negative was, I don't think that was a solution to our problem because we had no one to teach them. And so they would come here and want to work under someone, but we didn't have anyone for them to work under. Now, we do have a PR firm, but they don't work out of City Hall. They work out of their office downtown in the Renaissance building. Um, so that's, we did look at it, and if we ever get anybody in-house, we could certainly take advantage of that. But I don't want to bring intern out here and, and have nobody to work with or learn from.
Okay. Uh, the other item that I wanted to bring up is, um, you may recall, we, a while back, we talked about seven ten central. And, uh, people who lives in that area and, and the different streets around that location, have basically commended the city for the job that's been done because they cleaned the area with the big trailer, so forth. And, uh, the PD has gotten involved, uh, because we had a squatter there. The chief of police have been definitely on the case. And, and besides that, there've been issues concerning trash along eastern. And because of the response, and I commend committee, I mean, I commend DPS and the workers there who've done the job. And, and, and the compliments have come from the people within the community because it's been squared away. And the fact that that building, that location of seven ten, has been in that location for ten, I mean, for three years. And they were so happy to see that it was cleaned up, and they're still talking about it. So I just wanted to mention that, that, uh, you know, that we are making an impact in that respect, especially in an area that's been, uh, sort of there for a long time, but just dormant with nothing happening. And I want to commend again the DPS and, uh, its, its, its personnel for getting that job done. And the fact that the people are recognizing it, and they're talking about what, what a good job that been done.
That's good.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Chisholm.
Champ Track Camp, microphone out. Champ Track Camp is back this year where they provide scholarships for students who are going off to college. The first dates will be June seventeenth through the twenty-fourth from nine AM to three PM. And that will be at Robishaw High School. And the second dates are June twenty-fourth through June twenty-eighth, nine AM to three PM. And that would be at Romulus Junior High School. And breakfast and lunch is served, and it sharpens advanced skills and introduces beginners. Give your child a chance for a scholar, uh, college scholarship. They, I believe they've given out about four over the past seven years.
What were the times for Robishaw?
The times for Robishaw, or the dates? Uh, June seventeenth through the twenty-fourth, and that would be nine AM through three PM. And I believe there are some, um, flyers and whatnot on the table as you exit out of council chambers. And also, I did, as the mayor mentioned earlier, and I believe it was orientation, we were talking about the flood and stuff. I did have an opportunity to, uh, attend that with the different community leaders. Got a lot of insights. A lot of times, it was some facts and information that they provided that we don't necessarily know when it comes down to our sewage and our storm system. So that was very educational, just to kind of help us when we're out there in the community and talking and letting everybody knows what happens. Like he said earlier, the water rising up at, at the weakest or the lowest point, it has to go somewhere. And unfortunately, sometimes it's in our basements. And they also were talking about not putting those drain stoppers down there because when all that pressure builds up, they spoke of people's basement walls and pipes separating. And now you have a huge, a more huge problem. And then we spoke with the bins earlier, and I just wanted to reiterate on that. And we talked about Midwest recycling because I'd asked a question about the other bins we see around the community that aren't in agreement with the city or in contract with the city to do such. And like before, call ordinance to make sure those get picked up or handled appropriately. I did attend the cleanup for the beautification committee and the peace rally at the rec center this Sunday. It was a good peace rally. A lot of people tried to put that together and, and do something to benefit of what's been going on recently. The leaders were kind of dissatisfied of the turnout. So just want to put in the back of everybody's minds, when you do see the posts and you share them and comment and everything, if you can, please be in attendance. And DPS, Mr. Business, just wanted to say thank you. The light did get resolved on Patterson Court. And also, my last thing is, is there possible, since we do have GFL in the community and we've never really done a recycling to this capacity, could we have them do a presentation of a compare and contrast to show where we were before we started recycling to where we are? Just to kind of give a reminder to myself and citizens, um, basically how we're reducing our, uh, carbon print on the community or the world, I guess you could say, and what a goal could be to help benefit the community more so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, uh, three-part complaint from one of our residents. That would be former councilperson Ronald Johnson. He's healthy now and he's back. And he wanted to let us know that he watches us on the, uh, TV, and he sees certain things that shouldn't happen. One is that we do need to speak into the mic, people. He has asked us to speak into the mic. The other is he does not believe we addressed each other properly. He doesn't want to hear us saying, hey, Steve, he would like Councilman Chisholm. So you all can do what you want with that. Another he has with, uh, Jerome Bivens. It's about the crumbling wall on Inkster Road. That is ours. We established that, right? Under the viaduct? Nope, that's not ours. That's county. That, that thing they put up, under the viaduct there on Inkster Road. You mean the walkway?
It's ours.
Well, the wall that goes up the side by the viaduct on Inkster Road, south of Michigan Avenue, it's ours.
Each side of the street. On each side of the street.
Okay. Anyway, he says it's crumbling and it needs to be repaired, so I'm referring that to DPW at this point. Okay. The other thing is the Memorial Parade, Memorial Day Parade is, uh, coming upon us. And we are looking for volunteers for that day. So if you're interested in volunteering, we need, uh, strong young men early in the morning to help put up the tents and the tables and chairs at two different locations, here in front of City Hall as well as over in front of the post office. We need volunteers who are able to walk the entire parade route and be utilized as, um, spacers, you know, because you know how we all bunch up at some point or stretch out ten or fifteen miles? We need someone to keep that in line. So we're looking for any number of volunteers. Also, those sponsors out there that have your packets, those need to be turned in. I believe the cutoff was May first, but we're being flexible again this year. And, um, also, any participants who haven't turned in their packets, we need that too. Also, I have some club cards for the parade in my car. And you can take a bunch of those back to your churches and be handed out. I think we got about five thousand of, five thousand of them. So you can take a stack and make sure everybody knows about the parade. Because we'd like to see Michigan Avenue lined with spectators like we used to see Inkster Road lined with spectators. So this is our fiftieth, and it's special. And there are a lot of surprises in this parade for you. In fact, we have a kids float that is called Achieving the World. Because on that float, we have our young author, um, Darian Belcher, as well as the young man who was offered, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships, Michael Love. So we're promoting our children this year as well as the veterans. So it, it should be worth your time, and I'd like you to get with me if you can offer any of those things I have asked for tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to, I had a district advisory meeting two weeks ago. And, um, one of the complaints that our residents was having is Michigan Avenue and John Daley. And I spoke with the mayor about this in regards to the trucks that's coming in. The pavement is really bad. But one of my residents almost got hit by a truck because she couldn't move out the way because they're parking on both sides of the streets for the Secretary of State. Um, I'm not sure whether or not we should put no, um, parking signs on both sides of the streets there. Also, I talked to the mayor about maybe we can redirect, redirecting the trucks to go down Beach Daily. Beach Daily, Michigan Avenue, and then turn down Troll Biggs to get to their locations versus John Daley because Beach Daily may be a little wider for the trucks. Versus, because the trucks are tearing up both sides of the street. Even if you park behind the sign that says stop, there's still, some people have to move back even because they turning so wide. So that's something that me and the mayor talked about, and I'm not sure, you know, maybe we can make that happen. We have to talk to, um-
Talk to engineer and the DPS.
Yeah, and find out. Um, another thing too, um, I did go up to DPS this weekend, and I was able to meet some residents. They were calm. They were nice. Denise Champagne was up there. And the process, as many people that they had, process was going good. Some people was filling out their forms where they go in the back and sit down and wait for their number to be called. So that was good. So thank you. Thank the city for that. And Happy Mother's Day to all the good moms out there, and enjoy the day. And thank you. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. A number of things. On June fifteenth, I've been having a ball working with Community Up. They are sponsoring, um, the June fifteenth, Juneteenth Celebration of the City of Inkster. Now, I don't know if you- Now, I don't know if you Northerners understand the history of Juneteenth. I grew up in the great southwest, not the south, the southwest. There was a declaration of emancipation for slaves in this country. But it was some years before the people in Oklahoma and Texas found out that they had been freed. And that had been kept from them by the slave owners so they could continue to use their physicality to work on their land. So, where I come from, Juneteenth was a big and still is a big annual celebration. The reason this is so important in our community for everyone of all colors is to understand African-American, Black Americans, our history, our greatness, and the things we continue to do to make this country what it is. So, the Juneteenth celebration is going to be just a celebration of us and the community in which we live so that we have a better understanding of who we are. We are all concerned that our children are not finding out about us. There is no impetus on the part of any organization that runs educational institutions to teach Black history. I went to a high school where it was a segregated high school, and one of the classes I took was Black history. But our children don't have that opportunity in most places. So, we gotta do everything we can to make sure that they understand who they are, from whence they came, and where they can go. So, there will be, there is a flyer ready, we'll be getting everything together. Mrs. Strowman, Gladys, and Tangela, and the Mannan Street Block Club, we're all working together to pull this thing off with, to help Community Up. Because it's going to be a great, great celebration, it's very important. The next thing is the Parks and Recreation Commission is going to sponsor very shortly, and look for this information, a town hall meeting, we're calling Polish Our Jewel. Our recreation center is the jewel of this city and it has kind of been allowed to languish because mainly of economic situations. But we have enough smartness in this town and enough of everything we need to come together to fix that place up and make it what we want it to be. You know that one of the biggest drawbacks of our rec center is that when the previous one, some administration way back, built the pool, they didn't bother to cover it up. So, we have an outdoor pool that needs to be re, how much did you say the? Three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars just to fix the pool?
Fix the pool.
But we need to cover the pool because that's a year-round moneymaker. We all have to go everywhere else to go to Water, Robby, some Silver Sneakers and all that stuff because we don't have a pool on the inside in the wintertime. So, that's going to be one of the things we'll discuss at our town hall meeting. We want all of you to come. We would like to see this be a booming operation just like it is in the Hype Arena on Warren, like it is in Wayne, like it is the Romulus Activity Center. We can do that, but we have to come together and understand what happened to us so that we can unite and come together to make it better. Utilize C Click Fix. I do it all the time. Because it's an easy way for you to let city officials know what's wrong in your area. Now, if we have to offer a class on C Click Fix, I'll be glad to teach it, I love teaching technology stuff. But utilize it. And with that, I have to come to the defense of my colleagues. We were asked to circulate our neighborhoods. In one day, I turned in seven ordinance complaints because I ride my neighborhood. You are not going to forget that Councilwoman Wiley is the queen of Inxter cleanup. She was cleaning up Inxter long before anybody thought about this stuff. Miss Councilman Oden, Councilman Chisholm, Councilman Williams, I think I saw maybe Councilwoman Howard, the mayor and I were all at the twenty-seventh cleanup. I worked with the top ladies. We were down there on the floor scrubbing with a toothbrush to get the grit out of the metal piece that you step over when you're going through the general. So, this council, as Ms. Brock did say, is very approachable. We don't sit behind this table every other week. We get out there in the neighborhood. Somebody said to me, oh, you give out your personal cellphone number? I said, well, that's the only one I have. So, everybody that I know has my personal cellphone number. I get calls from people who aren't in my district. I got a call from a lady on New York, no, on Notre Dame, who's concerned about a house next door. That's not my district, but I will report it because she is concerned. So, this council is one of the most proactive group of people I have ever experienced in my life. And I'm very proud to be affiliated with them. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's enough.
That was a lot.
Well, I was on vacation, so I had a little chance to rest.
Mayor Protop?
Thank you. The Western Wayne, they're having their diabetic, their diabetes prevention program, and it's going to start May twenty-first. And if you want to contact them, you can reach them at three-one-three-five-six-one-five-one-zero-zero at extension one-three-nine. I'd like to thank Jason Turner. He put together a program yesterday over at the complex. And it was done live on Facebook, and I thought it was a very, very nice project. What I would like to see is for that conversation to continue, not for it to just be a one-time conversation. But that conversation needs to continue throughout the community. It was some very good information and our young, all the families, everybody needs to listen to that. I want to thank the DPS department for getting those lights back on on Annapolis and they're not blinking on and off anymore, so sisters are happy about that. And continue to shop Inxter and patronize your local other groups that's in the city of Inxter. Thank you.
Real quickly, issue of recycling was brought up earlier tonight. And as you know, the Conference of Western Wayne, we've been having meetings regarding the issue of recycling because it's, we share some of the same carriers. And obviously, you guys all know that China's not accepting some of our stuff anymore, which has created an issue for almost all the communities. Because we entered into a contract last summer, our contractor has not come back to us and asked for an increase in price yet. But they've sent letters to the other communities and asked them, you know, can we please charge your folks more? Because now we can't do this recycling. There's some other fraud stuff going on with the carriers, since it got so expensive, they're dumping the stuff. They're just dumping it in the landfill. And it's created, that's going to create more long-term problems. So, stay tuned, we're gonna have to deal with that at some point. We did reach out, we didn't wait for our carrier, we reached out. Hey, you guys gonna try to raise the price? We need to talk, what do we need to do? Not at this time, everything's status quo. And that's primarily because our contract's so new. So, maybe they took into account what the market was about to do when they entered into the contract. So, I just want to keep you posted. We are out there trying to find solutions to these long-term problems. And the different cities in Western Wayne are trying to combine and go out and use the leverage of several cities and six-hundred thousand people and try to negotiate better contracts for all of us. So, that, more stuff will be coming down the pipeline. Flood, obviously, a lot of people were affected by the flood, it really bothered me because I know how it feels to have water in your basements, it's happened to me before, not a good feeling, especially if you use your basement as living space. You know, and a lot of people lost a lot of money. A lot of folks were frustrated, they're screaming out on social media, who's gonna pay my deductible because they're struggling. Now, everyone knows the city is not in the business of paying your insurance deductible. But still, they were hurting, so they were just reaching out, trying to see whatever help they can get. And we're gonna do everything possible to get any type of help for our residents. So, even if you don't see us, you know we're working. I mean, Saturday, Chisholm and I, we're at the meeting Saturday morning, you know, because it had to happen then because the emergency was now. And as a result of that, hopefully, we'll get some federal relief that'll help someone, you know. It may not have affected everybody here, but we're guestimating, I'm guestimating about three hundred houses. We got two hundred and fifty already filled out the form, and some people didn't even get to DPS yet. So, that's a lot. Dearborn Heights had two thousand. You know, so we were lucky in a sense, but I'm sure those three hundred folks are not feeling lucky right now. So, you know, to spread the word, we're gonna accept these applica, these forms until Friday, ten AM. The initial deadline was today at ten AM, we got that extended because a lot of folks didn't have a chance to get down to DPS and fill out the form. You can get it here at City Hall at the clerk's office, or you can get it at the DPS office, but you turn them in at DPS. And we're hoping to get some federal help. We don't know exactly what that help is. They'll assess the damage and decide whether Wayne County will get federal help. And we are submitting that as a county and not just a city. So, it's all of us lumped together, so hopefully, we'll be able to meet the threshold. So, we'll just keep our fingers crossed on that one. I'd be remiss not to speak to all the rash of violence we've had over the last couple of weeks. It's what, it was the impetus for the peace rally that was just that, there just wasn't enough people there. I know we're all concerned. We have to deal with our young folks one way or the other. Either we gonna love them, embrace them and teach them, or we gonna be their victims. So, we need to figure out what that looks like. People who come from families that are not sound like most of ours. You know, we're here, it's not because we're smarter than anybody else, because we have great families and we have support. But what about the kids who don't? And they're still our kids. So, how do we parent them when they're not in our homes? These are tough, tough questions, I don't know who has the answers to. But we better figure out something, because it's getting ridiculous. You know, people are shooting each other over three, four hundred dollars, people are shooting their own friends, accidental shootings. Accidental shootings, how does that even happen? They're playing around with a gun, sitting around watching TV? I mean, I mean, they're just dropping, you know, just one by one. And it's getting sickening. You know, we always hate negative press, but this is reality, it's actually happening. You know, I hate to see it on the news, I cringe, just like everybody else. But I'm more worried about that kid, that family. And it's so commonplace now, we don't even react to it anymore. It was like, oh, well, another one's gone, let's keep it moving, you know? So, we have to come together as a community and figure out what we can do. Because it's just, it's just a mess, so. That's all I have, you know, I'm glad everybody came out tonight. Looking forward to spring, summer is coming. It's gonna be fun this summer, we're gonna be out and about, election year, you'll get a lot of visitors at your house. So, you know, try not to say any curse words or slam the door. Invite them in, talk to them about the issues, and see what their vision is for your city, so you'll know who you need to vote for. All right.
I would say, look forward to... Sometime this year, there will be people coming around from the, that they census to ask on who's in your home. So, we please answer the door, talk to them because the less citizens we have is going to cost us eighteen hundred dollars per person, children, adults. So, we want to make sure we get those federal dollars back into our community.
And everybody, Connie Mitchell's gonna be heading up a census committee. Since she asked me about it last week, I took that as her volunteering.
Learn that lesson, you ask, you're it.
But it's very important. The amount of federal dollars we get is based on our population. So, if we go down, we get less money, so that's more money that's gotta come out of our pockets to provide services and do what we need to do in the community. So, we gotta encourage everybody to participate in the census. Have a motion. Support. And properly move, support it, discussion.
Everybody's supporting.
All those favorites, say aye?
Aye.
Approve, say?